I am low. What's your phone? Mine's here.
You want straight?
Oh, mine was almost to the floor.
Oh, really?
Yeah. None of she complaining.
I'm where you commission.
Oh, this is perfect.
I'm gonna sit just like this, I'm gonna call you the next time.
Oh, really? Hey, Commissioner, how are you?
Oh.
Councilman.
Yeah, there I go.
Go.
Okay, how are you?
Good afternoon, welcome to City of Chester's deliberative meeting. Today is Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Present today is all of council. Mr. Solicitor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council, member of the public. Welcome to the Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. The following ordinances are on the agenda to be voted on at the regular meeting on Wednesday. B seven, first reading of Bill number seven, general fund budget for approximation of expenditures and expenses for the twenty-twenty-six calendar year. Bill eight, first reading of Bill number eight, salary ordinance prescribing the number of duties and compensation of the employees of the City of Chester for the twenty-twenty-six calendar year. Bill nine, first reading of Bill number nine, business privileged tax to set the rate for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in retail and wholesale business in the City of Chester for the twenty-twenty-six calendar year. Bill ten, first reading of Bill number ten, earned income tax to set the rate for salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned at three point seven five percent for residents and two percent for non-residents for work done or services performed or rendered in the City of Chester for the twenty-twenty-six calendar year with one percent being designated to distressed pension payments. Bill eleven, first reading of Bill number eleven, local services tax to set the rate for general revenue purpose upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within the corporate limits of the City of Chester for the twenty-twenty-six calendar year. Bill twelve, first reading of Bill number twelve, real estate tax to levy all real property subject to taxation at nine point four oh four one mils on real estate and library rate of point four zero one seven mils for the City of Chester twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. In addition to the aforementioned ordinances, the following resolutions are before council for passage. Resolution one-three-seven, authorize approval for the installation of a handicap parking zone in the three hundred block of Norris Street, in the two thousand block of Madison Street, in the one thousand block of El Cenor Place, in the eight hundred block of West Fifth Street, in the eight hundred block of Ward Street, in the four hundred block of Highland Avenue, and in the one thousand block of Remington Street in the City of Chester. Resolution one-three-eight, authorize approval for the award of the request for proposals for on-call towing to CCC Towing LLC to serve east of Curlin Street and Dell Cov Corp. doing business as Clayton Auto Parts to serve west of Curlin Street for an initial three-year term contract for the period one-one twenty-twenty-six through two and including twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-eight, and based on written satisfaction by the City of Chester, a four-year, a year-four option, January one twenty-twenty-nine through two and including twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-one twenty-twenty-nine, and a year-five option, January one twenty-thirty through two and including December thirty-one twenty-thirty. Resolution one-thirty-nine, authorize approval of the ratification of the solicitation from Keystone Purchasing Network for proposals to perform the Sun Village Park and Pavilion Repair Project, ARPA Project number nineteen. Resolution one-forty, authorize approval to publish a notice of the twenty-twenty-six budget public hearing on December eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at two P M. in City Council chambers. Resolution one-four-one, authorize approval to publish a notice for the reorganization of Chester City Council to be held on January fifth, twenty-twenty-six, at ten A M. in City Council chambers. Resolution one-forty-two, authorize approval of the twenty-twenty-six legal holidays for the City of Chester.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Just a few more.
Oh.
Resolution one-four-three, authorize approval of the twenty-twenty-six deliberative only meetings for the City of Chester held at two P M. on the listed days in City Council chambers. Resolution one-forty-four, authorize approval of the twenty-twenty-six council meetings for the City of Chester held at ten A M. and were designated by an asterisk at seven P M. on the listed days in City Council chambers. Resolution one-forty-five, authorize approval of the twenty-twenty-six Chester aggregated pension board meetings held at twenty, at two-thirty P M. on the listed days in the City Council chambers. Resolution one-forty-six, authorize approval of these substantial amendments to fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, annual action plans to create the Chester Park Ban Shell Improvements Project. That would conclude the list for today, Your Honor.
Thanks again. Before I ask if there are any questions or comments, I'm gonna ask our chief, there he is, Chief Financial Officer, give us a short overview of what's coming up with the annual budget as we're going to a first reading on Wednesday.
So, just a few highlights to start with, to frame the budget. The big unpaid MMO remains about the same.
MMO is, MMO is?
Oh, that is the unpaid pensions from approximately a decade ago that the city is liable for. That's roughly forty-three million dollars. It's a balanced budget. It was austere would be one of the words we would use to frame it. It was not easy to get it balanced. There's not really any luxuries in it. It is bare bones tight, but it is balanced. And the real, one of the real messages is no real estate tax increase and no solid waste fee increase. We didn't get access to a Pennsylvania loan that we've been getting in the last couple of years, anywhere between two million and five million a year. We would pay it back later in the same year. We don't have access to it, but we also have improved enough as one indicator that we are more stable with our cash. So, that's a good thing. We did not allow for the pending debt decision. We're anticipating that we won't owe it, but we would have to factor that in depending on negotiations. And it's the beginning of starting to address some of the structural issues that the city has not been able to deal with vis-à-vis putting some money into capital. Those would be the high-level overviews of the budget. If you want to go to the next slide, the important dates from here through year end. Wednesday will be the first reading. The budget will be available in, at the City Clerk's Office in City Hall starting after Wednesday or Wednesday afternoon up through December tenth. Twelve-eight is the scheduled deliberative meeting. It is at two o'clock per the resolution, not one o'clock. And the second reading would presumably be the following Wednesday to finalize the approved budget for next year. That would be the addressing B seven, and I would just make a comment, B nine, B ten, B eleven, B twelve, all four of those ordinances. There is no change from last year.
What did you say about the twelve-eight date, one o'clock, two o'clock?
Uh, the ordinance that I read in here says two o'clock.
Two o'clock for the hearing?
Yes, for the budget hearing.
Previously, we discussed one o'clock, and then now we're at two. That was probably my question to that. Are we trying to do it before deliberative or do it and then run into deliberative? At meaning starting at two o'clock?
And you said you're basing your time on what?
Previous conversations. I wasn't, I wasn't up to speed on using two o'clock. So, I'm comfortable with either one.
All right, one o'clock it'll be.
I defer to the dice.
All right, one o'clock, okay with everyone?
Yep.
All right, one o'clock.
There you go. So, one o'clock, and so that's the timing. And then, other than that, just most of the taxing-related ordinances, there's no change. So, that's another good thing for the city.
So, stand there for a second, just in case there are any questions or comments on the budget.
Do I have a question on Bill number ten? The earned income tax credit set the rate for salary, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation at three point seven five for residents and two percent for non-residents for the working services performed in the City of Chester. Calendar year with one percent being designated to the distressed municipalities pension fund. So, the two percent for the non-residents, is one percent of that going to the pension fund and one come to us? Or are we getting two percent and additional one percent will be going to the pension?
No, we get, one percent goes to the pension.
And one percent to us, to the general fund?
Yes, yes.
You sure?
Every, everybody who works inside the city pays the one percent.
It's my understanding.
To the distress, yes. The non-residents pay less because the presumption is they have a home, hometown payment that, that takes priority.
All right, let's.
There you go.
Now, hold on. The non-residents pay two percent plus the one percent for distressed? No. One percent of that two percent is dedicated toward, under Act two oh five, is dedicated towards the pension. All right, so then the residents pay two point seven five percent plus the one percent for distressed? The resident EIT is three point seven, three point seven five percent. One percent of that is dedicated under Act two oh five to go into the pension. Okay. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Anything else on the budget before he goes? No? Any other questions, comments on ordinances or resolutions? Council?
Um, I do want Lisa, if you can explain one forty-six.
Good afternoon. We are looking to reallocate some of our CDBG funding that we had previously budgeted for administration and contingency to repair the Chester City Ban Show. So, we're gonna be putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that project.
And?
And it requires a substantial amendment, and we have to take money out of prior years that we didn't use, and then we're reallocating it to this project.
Okay, so, um, oh, you, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes. But it's coming out of three, three years of our budget.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It's coming out of three different years, line items from different years in our budget that we hadn't spent. We didn't spend all of our administration money or our contingency. So, now we're reallocating it to a project.
Okay, so, two hundred and fifty to that project. But the numbers on the resolution, this looks like it's more than two hundred and fifty thousand. Are you guys using the extra money for something else?
I'd have to look at the, I don't know, I didn't add the resolution up. It should come up to be two fifty.
Okay, we got one nineteen, one hundred and nineteen thousand, sixty-one thousand, forty-eight thousand, and sixty-eight thousand.
Okay, my math isn't that good, so. I'm pretty sure it's two fifty, but I can check.
That looks more than two fifty.
Yeah.
Math ain't my favorite subject, but that looks, that's more than two, two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Well, we can check into the numbers, make sure they're correct in the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the only project that needs to, um.
It needs an amendment at this point, a substantial amendment, yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can just get some clarity on those numbers.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Floor is still open for council. Questions, comments, or anything? Councilman? That is math real quick. It's the one nineteen, three six nine, the sixty-one thousand, eight five five. And on line item three, it's that sixty-eight, that sixty-eight, seven seven six. That's two hundred and fifty thousand, so the math is math.
So, one nineteen, sixty-one, forty-eight, and sixty-eight?
It's the sixty, it's the sixty-eight on line three, because there's three numbers in there. It's the sixty-eight thousand that you're adding to line items one and two. And that, you add that up and it's two fifty.
Okay, I'm sorry, say that again.
It's a hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine.
Uh-huh.
Sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five.
Uh-huh.
It's sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six.
Okay, and where is this, I see forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four.
That forty-eight, one thirty-four, and then you look, there's a twenty thousand, six forty-two next to that.
Okay.
You add those two up, that gives you the sixty-eight, seven seven six.
Oh, okay, so sixty-eight total.
Yep, it's a sixty-eight total.
Sixty-eight plus forty-eight plus twenty, okay.
There you go. How about directors? Any questions or comments? None? All right, well, thank you. Looks like we have a robust community out here today at times when we usually have no, no one. So, we're gonna give you an opportunity, any here, anyone from the community, just get in line and see what you have to share with us today. Yeah, please do.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm calling the reference.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Rob Convery. I'm with Apex Automotive and Towing here in Chester, P A. I'm calling to speak about Resolution one-thirty-eight, about the on-call towing and so forth. There seems to be a few discrepancies amongst things as far as zoning went. We verified our zoning is correct. We are actually a C-two instead of a C-one, which CCC is claiming to have. We also have all the other stuff that says it wasn't submitted or approved and whatnot. I have a packet for each one of yous to see. We ask that we table this for further review to see if it's fitting. We're also ready and prepared to open up the lot that, it seems like they picked the wrong lot. They were looking at the next-door neighbors and not the one that we were actually planning to use. The insurance coverage for the three million plus or whatnot that they need is a forty thousand dollar investment from the company in order to obtain that coverage, which we're more than willing and ready to, to do, but pending a contract agreement with the City of Chester. So, I'm hoping I would be able to give this to you and have you guys review it before it goes to the table, possibly reconsider between the two.
All right, so just review for us again what, what you have in that packet there.
If I can approach, I'll be more than happy to give it to you.
You can do it from the mic. We're, we're gonna receive it anyway, but just let us know what you have.
Well, page one is the property highlights of the actual property we're gonna use. Second page is the surveillance agreement that was needed for there. Third page is the contingency agreement confirmation letter that was received. And then we have owners from the other properties and so forth saying everything is in good standing satisfaction. We also submitted copies of the zoning and so forth from the city, confirming that where we're zoned and what our zoning is, is permissible for what we're gonna be doing with the said property. We also have the commercial stuff in here showing that our commercial zoning, it's being a C-two, is more than capable of doing and zone permittinging for what our purpose is for it. Um, we also attached the Article thirteen twenty-three, which is showing what the zoning is for. We also included driver's license copies of the CDL drivers for our particular company and so forth. Any kind of pertinent information that may be necessary for what we're trying to achieve with the city here.
Is this information you've just put together for now, or have we had this before?
This information, but we don't think it got looked at properly. Because they came back with contradicting stuff when we were looking over it that wasn't seen from us. One, the big thing being that they seem to be looking at the wrong property.
Well, you just said you got copies of CDL.
Yes, of all that.
So, there's some new information?
I'm sure all this has been submitted, but this is just something we wanted to make sure that you guys received or you can actually review it and see. It's a great fit, we're right down the street. We've been a part of the community forever. We plan to, you know, help the city grow. And being where it's at, centrally located, it seems to be a prime spot for you guys.
I understand that, but there was, there was a selection process, there was a deadline for submission. I just, are you submitting anything new?
Everything was submitted within that timeline, but it doesn't seem like it possibly on a clerical end or whatnot. But we wanted to just ask for a second look at this on the stuff that we have confirming what we do offer you guys.
Mr. Solicitor, how would you rule on this one?
I mean, that is entirely up to the city and the selection committee and, and obviously the receiver. My understanding is the receiver has weighed in on this.
Okay, I'm really curious to see what, we will receive your submission. I'll be curious, you can just bring it right up here. You don't, you don't need a copy for everyone. Well, we'll take all the copies, though.
There you go.
Needs to go to the selection committee. But I will tell you, the first thing we're gonna see is we're gonna compare what you're submitting now to what was received by the selection committee. And I know we've made subsequent visits for more information.
Yeah, you guys stopped by, you looked at it, we checked out the surveillance, we did, we did the whole nine yards and then we discussed it. It was, uh, one of the city employees, the chief of finance, and a, a police officer of the sort came out and reviewed the property, and we answered any questions that they had. We thought everything was good, and then we started seeing things from there.
Okay, so we're not gonna table the resolution today, but we will go through this with the selection committee. If there's a reason to table, you know, come Wednesday, we'll know on Wednesday.
I appreciate any looks you guys can offer us.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir. Unless you have any.
Anyone else?
And so the selection committee will be getting back with council? You know, after you had a chance to review?
Well, don't say I, the selection committee will review.
I said you, meaning the selection committee.
Okay.
If you want, I will circulate that to the selection committee.
Yeah, we will know before we come up here on Wednesday what will be decided.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Anyone else, any last minute? Council, questions?
I got a question, Mr. Mayor. I'm the same subject. If the issue.
Hold on, just come to the mic.
Sure, I'm running.
I know. To save your breath while you're running.
Right, to my understanding, if the issue is the wrong address, will that, will that take precedence over the decision? I'm not, if, of course, if there's something new in the package that's different, but if the package is the same and the city made the mistake, will the city then table it? It's, that's what I'm trying to get clarity of.
I mean, there was a, how many questions were in the, I mean, there was a lot of data that was required.
Right.
So, we're just gonna compare what we received.
Right.
When the decision was made with what was presented.
I do know on one mistake, I don't know all, but I do know one that the city was looking at the wrong property for, it wasn't the property.
Well, that's news to me, so that's new information to me.
That's why.
We're gonna look it over.
That's exactly why I brought it to you. All right, thank you.
I would, I mean, since we do have the zoning director here, I would like to know a little more information about this, this zoning and if the property is zoned for this, can you elaborate on any of this?
Not right now, but I believe from not looking.
Not you, I'm talking to the director.
Oh, oh, I was about, I thought you put me.
Yeah, I think it's gonna take a review of this information since we're talking new addresses now. So, we'll just see what address we were looking at, what address you guys are, are saying is the new address. And, you know, all this will be looked at.
Councilman, I will sit with the zoning officer and make sure we check out what was just handed to us so that the correct information is before the committee.
Okay.
Also, while we're here, I see that you all brought a large number of people I, I see all the time. No one else has anything to say on, on behalf of the company? I wear, this is the time for the public to speak on, whatever you feel like you need to speak on.
And before you speak, uh, with all due respect, I understand we're gonna put it before the, but I, I would like to know, not just the committee, I wanna know these things for, you know.
That's what I asked for, what after they review, would they get back with us?
Yeah, because it's not the committee, I mean, ultimately, it's the council that's making the decision and has to vote on this. And so, I wanna make sure that we are fully aware and we know all of the facts when it comes to the zoning ordinance in that particular property that they have selected or have a contract with it, they would want to do business that if selected. So, don't just give the information to the zoning, I, I wanna know.
Is the council, then?
Okay, good evening, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
One of the discrepancies with the property is, for some reason, I'm hearing that we were supposed to be using the old San Rose Trophy, which is Mike's REED property. That's not the property, it's the property next door, which is Kenworth, the old Kenworth, which is the marble property. And we have a contingency lease agreement that once we get the contract, we get one point eight acres with three garages for indoor storage for the cars. And we was ready to go for, um, security cameras, office space, and private screening, so you can't see none of the enclosed cars. And from all my research that I have done, it's zoned for commercial use, storing cars, which is, we are auto service garage. So, we fall under, we just extension going across the street. And every auto shop that I'm aware of are able to store cars. And we have already approved our lot across the street, it's already approved as a storage lot for Chester Township. We already towed for Chester Township and a number of apartment complexes. We have all the required, um, license from the state, the Sound War license. The state had to come out and actually approve our lot to get a Sound War license. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the Sound War license is. That's the license you have to have to even do business with a municipality. So, I, I don't understand how the addresses got confused when they actually went over, the, uh, the committee went out. Rob, our service writer, walked them across the street, showed them the exact lot that we was gonna be using. So, I don't know how Ed Albrecht got to we using San Rose Trophy. San Rose Trophy is not even gated in, it doesn't even have storage, doesn't have anywhere to park other than out front. So, I, I guess that somewhere along the line, things got screwed up. But we are zoned for what we need. And we ready to work. And we trying to keep this within Chester, Chester for Chester's. Help us, help you, help, y'all help us, help. Yo, we try, all these people here are depending on a paycheck from this opportunity. This is a great opportunity for, for us, and we want the job. We want to do city service.
And the RFP was, um, that information submitted?
Yes, and then I had got an email about, uh, some things that we didn't submit, and I submitted, they asked for a contingency letter. Let me see. I got it. They asked for a contingency letter, and the contingency letter was emailed, and it has the proper address on there. It has the proper owner, Martine Whitel. has the proper address on there, it has the proper owner, Martine Whitello, who owns the property, and he's given us the whole side. And the reason he wants to do it is because stormwater, he using, nobody's using that lot, and he's paying for stormwater, I think he said $3,500 a month. And he wants us there to help him, you know, help y'all. You know, we have to keep the money in the city. The money need to circulate 10 times in the city before it leave Chester. Like, I, I don't understand, you know, like, why we don't, we didn't get any help. This is all new to us, and it got crammed down our throat. The RFP was for like seven days, 10 days at the most, and we, you know, we done the best we could do, and we, we satisfied everything. My niece, like, she worked hard on doing that RFP, she never in her life done anything like that. She got the work. So, we just asking for, you know, the opportunity. That's it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks.